I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. So, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Let's talk about your motion, Gary.
Second.
Second, Joe. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Public comment? That's quick. Consent items. Do you have a motion to approve the consent items?
Motion.
Motion by Joe?
Second.
Second by Mimi. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Tech preparation for school year.
As you know, we have reached an agreement with Dependable Solutions and in order to get us going as far as all the different access points, the wireless access points and making sure that that's all working, making sure that all the teacher computers were logging on to the system, could log on, were working, could get to the printers, that their LCD projectors or Elmo's were working, smart boards, so making sure that the teachers had what they needed to start. In two, actually in a week and a half, people from Dependable Solutions put in 154 man-hours. Of the 154, 150 were onsite. And so the bill came in for that and in looking at what they suggested, what they had for the year, they said we'll still stay within that amount that they had quoted for the year, but when you look at the number of man-hours, they basically put in two months. They put in eight weeks, in a week and a half as far as man-hours. But then now as things are up and running and working, they won't have to put in those kinds of hours. But the first, the next, when we have board pay, you'll see a half-year bill for Dependable Solutions, but that was just what we needed to get everything up and running for the school year. The staff, I can't count the number of staff members that have come in to thank me for the board's decision to go with Dependable Solutions. They have been helpful, they have been courteous, they have been prompt, they have been very And the staff is very willing to do the ticket system so that we're really tracking what the issues are and making sure that everything is fixed and ready to go. So I think it's going to be a very good working relationship.
Do we have to do anything over the grade school at all?
Lots.
Oh, okay.
And we're working through what things are still under ASCENTEC network administration management and those things that are with Dependable Solutions. And it's, Dependable Solutions understands what they're supposed to be working on and when they know what something that ASCENTEC is supposed to do, they have already said, no, that's already in the district's contract with ASCENTEC, we're not going to bill you for that because you're already paying for that with ASCENTEC. So that also is going to be much more cost-effective for Houston Public Schools. So we're not paying for something twice.
Good.
So, yeah, so now that we've dug out of the hole that we're in, when are we going to start to talk about the stuff we probably should have been talking about all along? For some reason, for instance, my, one of my kids keeps asking, are we even able to bring the Chromebooks home? I know Michaeline mentioned it, just brought it up in a meeting or two ago and I, so just certain things like that. What is our strategy?
Right, and that's-
What are we doing with the Chromebooks? What's the replacement of the Chromebooks? Are we just going to upgrade them? How many years out?
Yep.
All that stuff.
That's, and we're getting together a committee that will be meeting every two weeks to really start hashing through that, planning, looking at what other districts do as far as the one-to-one initiative, looking at what's right for us, looking at, and the other thing, we've already started those conversations with the faculty, with some of the faculty computers were needing to be replaced. And do we do Apple? Do we start doing Dell? There are two employees that with their jobs, they're not, they're non-teaching staff and with their jobs and with the sites that they had to access, it made more sense for them to go with a PC in place of a Mac. And so we're, those are, they're now with PCs so we don't have to try to come up with loading a remote desktop on an Apple just to keep everybody on an Apple. But then as far as faculty, we're keeping all the faculty on Apple through our lease with Apple for the desktop models. And then we can go probably a year beyond that lease because it was, it's a lease to own, so all those computers after four years are ours. And so we can probably push those to five years, but that now gives us three years where we really start looking at what are the right computers for our teachers to have. What, and we need to be proactive and we need to really start looking at this as far as planning out because we need the budget. And so looking at three years down the road, what are we going to be doing? What should our teachers be using? What's the, what's the best system for them to be on? And so we're in that whole planning process now.
So who's on that committee and can there be a board member or two involved? Maybe not once every two weeks, but I think we have a lot of-
Yeah, I was curious, what are you going to, what are you going to, looking at starting this?
That's, will be the onsite principals, Becky Paravec as the tech integrationist, Gwen, because finance is vital to any tech decisions. And I will be on it and then probably Joe from Dependable Solutions. It's either Joe or JT, the two leads that are on the Houston contract.
So there could be a board member on there if we want to want.
Well, we would have to appoint at the beginning of the year.
Right.
Yeah, in January, we'd add it to that list.
Well, then that would be an official committee.
That's right.
Somebody can help out. I guess your comment when you said, look at what other schools are doing, that's fine and dandy, but I would like to be way over here beyond what other schools, like, we can't, we can look at other schools for the lessons learned, but if we're looking for a creative solution, it's not going to be found in another school.
No, but I don't want to make someone's mistakes.
Right, but it could be found in business. It might be something my company's doing, it might be something Gary's company is doing or Joel's company is doing already that's cutting edge, that we could easily implement that would make a big difference.
Well, the cutting edge is also the bleeding edge.
I know, you got to be careful. You can't be so cutting edge, you got to be, but at the same time-
Most companies, and I don't want to be on the bleeding edge.
But looking at what is coming down the road, businesses typically do things before schools do, so, or slightly different. So having that perspective, I don't see how it would-
And that's also with Dependable Solutions. Granted, we are their 26th school that they are providing the IT service for, but they also work with businesses as well. And so they, that representative will be bringing that vantage point of not only the educational perspective, but the business perspective too. So we're trying to make sure that we're looking at every angle and planning things years in advance because that's, we need to start doing it that way.
I would say if you're looking at every angle, including the board as much as possible, would be part of that.
Well, yeah, we want to have a board involved in it so we know what's going on, at least, you know, communication wise. Anything else? Gary? Mimi, do you have anything else?
No, I'd just like to see a board member, more than just receiving communication, actually at the table and involved.
Oh, no, we should talk about it in January when we come up with our committees, if that's one of them or somebody being assigned to it. It's kind of like Iowa, I don't have, because we have to be assigned that to-
That one does, because of contracts, that one doesn't, during the school day, so it needs to be somebody that could be here during the school day for those meetings.
Okay. Okay, let's keep that in mind. Long-term facility maintenance updates.
Well, do you want to, Gary, you want to do the facility?
Well, we talked, yeah. We talked about the signage issue and we're looking at having, oh, are we looking at having all three? Okay, Brian Forsite and Kevin Jumbek and-
Lacrosse Sign Company.
Lacrosse Sign Company. Okay, there's another one.
And then Wild.
Wild Exhibit?
Yeah.
Okay, we're looking at contacting four parties for ideas and estimates. One of the things we want to do is somewhat coordinate the signs between the facilities and the other thing we talked about was having, how to provide directions to people coming to one facility so that it's not the one they're looking for, they have some idea where, which direction to go to get to, what they're after, that kind of thing. And then we also talked a little bit about a budget, but we didn't really talk specifics on numbers, but at some point we will need to provide guidance on that. The existing proposal was about 17,500 just for the high school, so if we're looking at all three schools, we'll need to adjust accordingly. We talked about demoing the house by the preschool. We thought estimates, contacts were being made, nothing has been done there yet. So we want to get those contacts made, we want to know what the estimates are, who can do it, when they can do it. We also need to look at the question of the shut-off valve. Does that need to be coordinated with the contractor doing the demoing so it gets done at the right time? That's our responsibility. We talked about the amount of funds. Quinn reported there's $12,000 left in the project, the main project fund, after all the overages, changes, additions, whatever have been made, there is still funds remaining for now. So that's, that's good news. And then Quinn also reported some of the changes that were having to be made and those details. Anything else?
Air conditioning is now running at the elementary and hopefully by tomorrow the building will cool down. We were having some issues getting it working during the day, but it, it's by 2:00 today. It was, it was starting to cool, so tomorrow that upstairs should be much better.
So it will be much appreciated then?
Yes. It's just, there's a lot of humidity to take out of the air right now.
Okay.
So can we use that 12,000 then to, like, and I haven't walked through and saw everything, but I just happened to be in an open house for kindergarten and dropping off towels and stuff. But, you know, like, some of the tiles look maybe more worn than they were before. Can we use some of that money to kind of spruce, just to do some basics, sprucing up of some things that maybe took some wear and tear? I'm sure there's other spots in the school that are like that.
Well, Quinn also reported there is some ongoing work that will need to be done over the next month, say?
Right.
So we probably want to wait till that's-
And we know that next summer, next summer, when we can actually paint and the paint will, any of the water damage that has occurred will be sealed and the paint will adhere. We're waiting to paint for a year until we're sure that all leaking has been caught.
Yeah, we need to cop our mantles first.
And so with that, so next summer we'll need money for paint and the sprucing that will go into it.
So we'll probably do a walkthrough at the end and just see, and that, what you pointed out, Rick, you know what she's talking about? Mr. Barnes?
Yeah, I think they've got a solution for some of the tiles. But some of them may have to.
I got a couple of questions. One is, what do we do with the old gym floor in the high school?
It's there.
It's, it's still the same gym floor, it just got sanded. It's not like when we replaced the elementary, when we replaced the parquet.
Okay, so it's the same one. They just put a cover on top, okay. And then you asked about, are we using them on the, looking at the house at all?
Um, no, we never talked to him about that.
And, you know, we took off early to meet the deadlines. Did we meet the deadlines?
Yes, because we opened school on time.
I get that, but did they complete everything that's planned?
They completed everything because anything that's running over now is not going to cost us anything.
I know, I know that, but did this, they were supposed to have everything done come the start of school, right?
And it is. Other than the, the work that's going on in the boiler now is the, is for the heating and we knew that that, you can't commission the boiler when it's this hot out, you have to wait until it cools down a little bit because you don't want to heat up the whole building that way. So, yes. Is that answering your question or not really?
I guess not.
Well, is it all done though? I mean, I heard-
Well, there's some tweaking that has to be done.
Yeah, but I get, I get what Joe, I mean, is it 100% done?
No.
Well, no.
No, no, but what, isn't it supposed to be 100% done? I mean, and, and we have to make sure it gets 100% done.
Well, I think it's done to the extent required by the, contractually and legally by the contract.
Yes.
That part's done.
There's still some piping going on. There will be some work for the next two weeks in the boiler room. It's going to take two weeks because they're not going to be doing any loud stuff during the school day. And so it's going to be after school, the stuff that they're doing during school is stuff that doesn't make any noise. And so it, it's one of those where they're, they're making sure that they're not interrupting the school day at all.
And the ceiling tiles need to be done, right? Were there ceiling tiles that were not ordered?
No, they're, they're done.
They're done?
Yeah, they had to be.
They had to be?
Yeah.
Okay.
The inspector's been through the building, they walked through and they gave us occupancy for the building.
On Thursday.
It was just, like she was saying, just because we talked about them at the meeting prior to this, there's a few things that need to be tweaked because, but, so it may be a month before it's, everything's handed over to us completely. Like she was saying, the boiler, there's a verifying venting on insulation because when they were doing, they turn the system on, the temperature is not where they want it to be, so they got to make some adjustments on that. So it's just, it's not like they're running away and we're done with you guys, we did it, what we did.
Well, I know that, but I know they're not running away, but, you know, they're supposed to be done at this date.
Oh, yeah, and that's, yeah.
It's got to be done at the-
It's done, but commissioning always, it was scheduled for commissioning through, the commissioning through, for about two months after the project's done. That's typical. So the project is done and then as you commission it, get it up and running and then tweak what needs to be tweaked so you're sure that it's running appropriately.
Coming on the late Sunday, I was worried about that. They got that in, and the tile, that was concerning, but they got that in.
Well, the gym was pretty, the elementary gym was pretty full when I walked in there last Thursday.
It was cleaned out today.
So it's, it's amazing, yeah, I mean, if they got it all out, somebody worked, somebody worked over the weekend, I'm thinking.
They did, yeah.
Teachers were all in and custodians.
But, well, yeah, I'm sure the teachers had their classrooms, but that wasn't teaching stuff in the gym either, it was like boxes and it's like-
It's ready to use tomorrow when we'll be inside at recess because of the rain.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep, it's, I, our-
Because I was like, no way.
Our, our teachers, our paras, paras put in extra time, the teachers put in extra time and our custodial staff. I, I can't say enough good things and commendations for just the attitude and the work ethic and they really could have been griping and complaining and instead they just rolled up their sleeves and said, okay, let's make it work. So.
At the transformation from last Monday?
The transformation from last Monday until today. In fact, I think it was a fourth grader that, I was over there today and a fourth grader stopped me and said, the cafeteria looks huge, just looks like a brand-new building and it, it really does. So that's, when the kids notice it. And here at the high school, when the kids notice the front of the building and say, oh, this building looks cool now. That's, because we did it for them, so.
Speaking of that, there's a few other things.
I think we were going to talk about the roofs that we already had done in the grade school gym.
Oh, yes.
Garage.
Yes.
F-W-A, right?
Yeah.
New shingles over here.
On the roof, new soffits.
Over here.
Yep.
That was part of our discussion. Ken Johnson's going to do it.
Yep.
So, I think that was all there.
Yeah, something else we should talk about at some point is the entrance to the elementary school gym, those steps.
Yes. Yes.
That should be on the list, we talked about.
Yep.
High on the list.
Good.
Any else?
No.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Old business, items for discussion and approval, approval of the 2017 Houston High School Clay Target Team.
Last year when you approved this, you just approved for a one, one-year gig and so now-
It's a year.
Yep. And I assume they're starting this fall then?
They were here the last, the last meeting?
Yep.
So you have a motion to go through that?
Motion. Okay, a motion from Joe.
Second.
Second by Gary. Discussion.
I just want to say my, both my kids are part of it and love it, and so they really have a lot of fun.
That's good.
I think there's lots of good kids involved, seems like it's, it's good for them.
The coaches and the volunteers really seem like they are doing a nice job. Makes me want to try them.
I was surprised at how many volunteers they had and what the ratio is between kids and parents.
That's good. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
New business, items for discussion and approval, policies for first reading, policy 524, technology internet, availability.
Read through it, this is an annual review policy. We did it the last time in 2015. It really hasn't changed since the last time, but it's one of those where, look through it and we can, if you've got questions, let me know, but it will be on the docket for approval in September 20.
Okay. Announcements, important events, October 1st.
First, as far as announcements and important events, Houston Elementary School is designated as a reward school for the fifth time in six years, which, and so the problem is, where do we put the new banner? And that's, it's a pretty impressive problem to have. It was based on the growth, so the kids really, the growth that those kids showed in one year was more than one year and we are doing a very good job of closing any achievement gaps that exist, which means we're doing what the rest of the state is trying to do and we're succeeding. So it's, once again, says a lot for the staff at the elementary school.
Can I ask a question then?
You bet.
I, Rick probably knows the answer, or maybe you know the answer too, but in the elementary school, how many new kids do we have?
Oh, that's what I'm going to go through next.
Okay, because I saw the email and I was like, wow, I don't, I was just curious how many, and then my next statement was going to be, what are we going to do if we keep growing at that rate?
It, once again, it's a good problem to have.
No doubt.
Last year, we had 222 students at the elementary school. As of today, we have 241. We grew by 19.
That's awesome.
We were projecting to have 227, so we ended up with an extra 14 within the last couple of days.
Two more coming in October.
And two more coming in October.
Are most of these children coming in via parents moving in the area or going outside the area picking them up?
Most of them are parents moving in. We, we've had a couple of open enrollments, but the majority have been moving in. At the high school, last year we were at 192, as of today, we're at 206. Summit was in the upper teens, we started at 20 today and they were still coming in this afternoon into Summit. So it's a good thing that Maria Felton got bumped from, I realized last week, as the numbers started growing, there was no way we could staff that with one and a half teachers and a paraprofessional. And so now we've got two full-time teachers and a paraprofessional. And if we keep growing this way, I, I don't know what-
So we got like 20 some new kids collectively, yeah? I mean, no, not 20, we're like-
We have, at the high school, we had 14 and then more with Summit, so, yeah, we're-
Does that count include a preschool or not?
No, that doesn't include the preschool and I think the preschool was growing too.
Do we know the preschool numbers or no?
I didn't get those today, I'll get those.
But that's-
Yeah, that's a good thing.
It's-
Was the growth at the elementary school kind of spread out or was it?
The seven, the first grade class, in kindergarten they were at 21, now they're at 28, so that first grade class grew by seven, the second grade class grew by two, the third grade class held steady, the fourth grade class grew by one, the fifth grade class grew by four and the sixth grade class grew by five. Now, looking at the first and the fifth grade class, if those classes get two more students each, then we need to talk about, they're hitting that, and it's a board-approved number when they split into two sections, because right now they're both at one and a half. And so if, if we get, and when Mr. Barnes was saying, we're getting two more kids in October, one of those is a fifth grader. So if we get another fifth grade besides that, we need to look at, do we split this into two full-time fifth grade teachers and-
Where will you put them? Yeah. It's amazing, I, I mean, it's amazing that there's 250 kids in that building. I mean, just, it's a lot of kids.
Mm-hmm. A new cafeteria, you do.
Yeah, I think we might need to work on that addition, right?
And if we keep growing like this, we're going to have to look at that addition sooner rather than later.
Well, I think we should anyway, honestly.
But it's on the list.
We tried to get it in last time.
But if that's-
But you're right, I mean, he's, he needs to be shown in there.
We've got some, our ADSS program that, I think they're calling it the What I Need Program. That has to take place in the library because we have run out of classrooms.
So, so as a backup plan, I mean, in case we do need another classroom, I mean, what is your, the library, I mean, do you get a trailer?
We're fine for this year. We're fine for this year.
Okay, you don't expect twins, fifth grade twin twins?
We're fine for this year.
Okay. So we have one year to build the addition.
We're fine for this year.
Yeah.
And, and right now they're just, we're making it all work. Scheduling is tight. Because of that issue, scheduling is, is very tight as far as who's going where, when, but that, the staff is making it all work.
Good.
And in the high school here, I'm sorry to drag this on, but in the high school, maybe it's too early to answer this question, but with all the rearranging, is it working well so far?
So far, well, some of the kids had to be, some of the kids walked into classrooms. Where's math? And so there's a little bit of that learning curve, but we've got so many new kids. Everybody was a little bit, where's this teacher now? So that, that I think is going to go just fine, that it was kind of a revamped schedule for the first day, just to go through some of the different things as far as PVS, to go through ramp up to readiness, to go through some of the other components that make up the day. And the teachers are, if you walk into some of the classrooms, you'll see the CHAMP list and that's something that came back. A group of staff went out to Portland to, to learn about a whole- to, to learn about a whole school-wide student behavior, student management type format. And CHAMP is the acronym. And so you'll see that the CHAMP it up posters in every classroom so the students all know what the routines are. The students know the expectations. And in the first day, talking to staff, they're, they're all very hopeful. And they said, you know, this is, it's shaping up already to be a very good year.
Day one.
Yeah, day one. But it's good to start the year hopeful.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's enrollment onsite. MNVA started today. Full-time students. I've got, full-time, including the part-time kindergarten is at 1541. Last year, on the first day of school, we had 1616. So that's a difference of 75 fewer students than we had last year. But once again, you saw that in some of the staffing reductions that we had to, 75 works out to about two teachers. And so that's, with the contracts and the expansion, that's about what we're doing.
And then are we, how many free seats are we using in the high school for this first semester? Do you know about?
I, those enrollments are still coming in this week. So it's, the kids get this week to look at their schedule and see if they want to change something. There are some kids that didn't get into, if they're in a PSEO class and they realize that's not really what they wanted, then they got this week to say, I don't want to drive over to Winona. I don't want to, you know, take that time out of school. I want to be here. So they can bump in this week still. And that's, I'm seeing those numbers. This is the week where we see those part-time numbers just kind of blossom.
So an extra lot of numbers.
Yes. The online committee is meeting the 20th before the board meeting. And so by then we'll have, we'll have definitive numbers for the start of the school year. We'll start, we'll have some indication of the October cohort kids for that second cohort. And we'll have more definitive staffing. And that's, that's true every year where this is kind of in that trickle-in period.
They want to take advantage of them.
Okay, and then the other thing that I need to talk about, October 1st, is the all-school reunion and the, the grand reopening. So we're going to piggyback and do both at the elementary gym, 10 o'clock in the morning, that Saturday. And then, Mr. Bartsch, I've heard that you were giving, you have volunteered to give tours?
I'll give tours.
Yep, and I'm giving tours, so. And the Hurricane Foundation is providing refreshments.
Before, okay, anything else?
No, that's.
Meeting and committee updates. We talked about facility. Was there another, any other ones?
Finance is next Tuesday, the 13th. We need to have finance because we need to buy September 30th.
Next Thursday?
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yep. We need to set the levy. Kind of figure out, once again, look at LOR and what we want to do there so that those initial tax bills don't come out and scare people, especially if we know we're not going to take that much. And then October 20th is the online schools committee.
Is that it?
September 20th.
September 20th, yes. Did I say October 20th?
Feedback? Anything else?
I, I sent out the survey to all of the staff on the back-to-school. And so I hope, I should have that available at the next board meeting so we can look at what, well, what needs to be tweaked.
And then future agenda items?
I just, September 20th, we know that finance is going to come back for.
Do a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Joe, second by you. Question, all in favor?
Aye.
All in. Thank you all for coming tonight. It's my pleasure.